Thank you, God. We thank you that you're gracious, God. We thank you for you being our keeper, our provider. Lord, we're just asking you to give us wisdom so that we may guide this great city to the places and to do the things that's pleasing to you. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next is we need to set the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Here none will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Ms. Polish, second by Ms. Shoemaker. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes. How did you vote, David?
I voted in the affirmative.
And what's your name?
David Moore.
Okay. I have to tell the, I have to announce that Councilman Moore is attending virtually tonight via the computer. And so when he votes, he has to announce his name and how he voted. So that's the reason we have to go through that formally tonight. Am I clear now?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Are there any questions? Here none will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Mr. McCorkle, second by Ms. Polish. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Councilman Moore, please state your name and how you voted.
Uh, David Moore. I vote in the affirmative.
Thank you, sir. Next, discussion of the 2021-2022 proposed budget and fee schedule, Michelle Wood.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Here tonight to do an overview of the 21-22 proposed budget presentation for you that you all received May 10th. The proposed budget totals, general funds, fourteen million, six hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars. Enterprise fund at nine million, four hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars. The total is twenty-four million, sixty, sixty thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars. This is seventeen point four-seven percent over fiscal year 2021, which had a huge COVID impact. We wanted to more compare it to the year before that, which, non-COVID, of 2019, '20, and it's actually five point four-seven percent under that budget. Wanted to kind of give you, we went about it a different approach this year, so I just kind of want to tell you the timeline. We had all departments submit the line items to finance. Finance reviewed all the line items and made corrections based on some duplications, et cetera, that was in, maybe it had something duplicated in two different departments, so we made those corrections. We then met with the city manager to review all departmental requests and revenue projections. Finance then met with all the departments and discussed any changes needed and prioritized the capital requests. We then met with the city manager again and gave him a proposed budget and, to review. And then the budget was, proposed budget was given to y'all. Sorry. Some of the forecasted increases for 21-22, some of the external factors were sales and mu, this is for revenue, sorry, um, sales and use tax, property tax, and motor vehicle tax. Some of the internal factors was the three-year water and sewer rate study increase and a proposed stormwater fee increase. With the year, year three water and sewer rate plan, the base of two thousand gallons or less will increase by three dollars and seventy-five cent. We took a five thousand dollar gallon, five thousand gallon water bill, and that increase would be seven dollars and ninety-eight cents. Once we've done a comparison of some of the local municipalities around us, as you see, we're still the lowest in the county even with the increase this coming year. Some of the expenses we needed to consider and forecasted was, some that was out of our control was personnel cost increases such as health insurance at nineteen, up to nineteen percent. Retirement was a mandatory increase from ten point one-five percent to eleven point four-one percent for general employees, and from ten point nine percent to twelve point zero-four percent for law enforcement office, law enforcement employees. Other expenses increased was just your normal, like utilities and gas increases. We asked all the departments to only request operational needs. We included a salary, salary adjustments per the salary study and included longevity. We had no new positions. We included travel and training and included capital and vehicle replacements. The capital improvement plan, once we asked the departments to look at the previous plan and kind of prioritize and move things, the general fund minus recreation come in at eight hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-one for this upcoming budget. Enterprise was two million, four hundred and fifty-five thousand. Power bill was five hundred and eighty thousand, and the recreation was six hundred and twenty-one thousand, which we're proposing to use ABC funds. Like I said, we're recommending utilizing, utilizing the ABC fund balance to complete all the fiscal year 21-22 capital projects of seven hundred and twenty-one thousand in recreation. Our current fund balance, ABC fund balance, is at June 30th, 2020, was nine hundred and three thousand, eight hundred, nine hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and three dollars. Estimated at June 30th, 2021, is going to be one million, one fifty-three, eight oh three. So that would, after we fund the projects, that would leave five hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and three dollars. But that, of course, that will increase with the revenues that are going to come in, in the next budget year as well. The unassigned fund balance for the general fund, as of 5/24/21, is four million, two hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars. That's thirty point, little over thirty and a half percent of the amended budget. Enterprise fund, as of June 30th, 2020, and theirs is actually, in the audit, is considered unrestricted net position. It's not worded as a fund balance. It was twelve million, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars. But you've also got to take in consideration the next five years. If you see in the CIP, we've got like fifty-three, over fifty-three million dollars of capital projects. And that's it.
Does Council have questions for Ms. Wood or Mr. Braswell? Mr. Meadows?
So the, the first question I wanted to ask is about the revenue projections. Is that based on the revenue from the last audit? Or is it, is it including what we expect to get with all the new construction we expect coming forward?
It's actually based on kind of the trend we are this year, but still kind of being conservative with not knowing how COVID may still impact the next coming year. And we took some of the percentages from the league recommendation. Um, does that answer?
So, so what is the base number that you're using and what kind of projection are you adding to it?
I don't have those spreadsheets in front of me, but I can get that for you.
Okay. I'd just like to have an idea where we're starting from, and I'd like to have an idea of what's being included, because I know we have a lot of new commercial development that is on the horizon, and I know we've got a lot of new construction that's going on. And I'm curious, are we capturing that or not? Because that has a fairly large impact on that four million dollar number that you have, and will also dictate what level of comfort one would have with that. Because if, if we have been conservative and we expect some things that we don't know exactly what they're going to be yet, which I agree with that idea of not including them, um, you know, but I'd like to have an idea where we're at. Yeah, so we've had a pretty good idea before where we have, usually, if I understood it right, we used the previous revenue number, and we've added a little bit to that and kind of stopped there. And then we generally kind of were pleasantly surprised with more in the, the fund balance at the end of the year than we thought we were going to have. Um, so I didn't know what strategy we're employing. We've got a couple of new folks in the mix. I just kind of want to know what else methodology is on that.
I've got the spreadsheet and I can get that for you, with the percentages and everything. We had some tables and stuff that we took into consideration. I can get that.
Okay. Yes, sir?
So, um, I can't remember exactly where we were at, but we did set, as a council, a policy around CPI. And if my memory serves me correct, uh, we had said that the budgeting number we would use would be set for January of the current year. Um, I see in the presentation in one of these, we have January cited with a different number than what we have in the budget, which is cited for March. Um, I'm not saying that we should go with one or the other, but we should pick one, and that's what we should be using. Um, I think we said January. If y'all want to adjust that or make that suggestion that it should be March, uh, the information we had given before was that you needed to know what that was going to be to properly do your job of projecting in January. Um, you know, it appears that March may be okay. Um, I'd just like to have a policy where staff can kind of rely on, here's the point in time where we pulled that number and everybody knows kind of how that's going to go. Uh, there's a percent difference between the two, so I'm, I'm not trying to force our hand back to January. I'm just saying, if we're going to have a policy, it should be consistent and predictable. And right now, I don't think we're following exactly what we said.
Yeah, as far as the, uh, looking back into January CPI, that was when we were considering to either give employees a raise based on that date of like January, based on CPI, or whether we were going to give them just like a lump sum bonus, and then we decided on a lump sum bonus. I don't know what the minutes reflect as far as like going back and looking in the, in the past on what month we set, but when we were running through our presentation, uh, we looked at if we wanted to give employees, um, a raise, the employees outside of the salary study the raise, we looked at the most recent data that was inside the CPI at that time, or...
That statement is absolutely correct in that when we had that conversation, that was what we were considering. Um, but I know for a fact that we set a policy to set the COLAs based on the January CPI, because we've asked multiple times in the past with a different finance director, what is this three percent based on? And we were giving essentially no real answer. So I know that I brought it up specifically, and council went along with setting it at a specific time tied to a specific index that everybody could look at and see, and there was no questions about why a COLA was there. And then just kind of, we've, I've had a couple of side conversations where we have tried, but COVID kind of messed it up this past year, uh, to embrace a merit system. So, you know, ideally, one would have a COLA, and you can look at your revenue projections and set a range, you know, that could end up being more than the three percent, you know, if it's the right numbers for that year or less. So, you know, we're actually trying to set up a system that would be more beneficial to employees where, you know, there's not just a set amount that goes to everybody, period. You know, there would be some adjustment for cost of living, and then there would be some recognition of, hey, you did a really good job this year, and we're going to recognize that through a merit system. We haven't quite gotten there yet, but, you know, kind of heads up, I guess, HR folks are likely going to ask city manager for a merit system in the near future. And I think that usually happens as part of the budget process. I'm looking at the mayor to make sure I've got that right. So if you'll check that and, and let us know what y'all want the policy to be, whether it be January or March, I just want it set at a set time, you know?
Yes, sir.
So, um, council needs to have a discussion. And David, I'm surprised you haven't raised your hand yet with the ABC money. Um, that has been growing for a particular reason over time, and I don't know that it was ever intended to be kind of a replacement of kind of standard capital improvements over time. We had always kind of been trying to keep that for something, for lack of a better term, something special, something impactful, something kind of a big deal. It appears to be, being used as a replacement for standard operating kind of capital stuff that we have to use to continue operating. If I'm wrong about that, I don't know who's the right one to answer that.
What exactly, um, yes, sir. Mr. Moore?
Well, that, that money, uh, has always been earmarked for recreation in whatever capacity we've wanted to use it in, whether it be, uh, buying a new utility building that was, store our stuff, buy equipment, anything that concerned the recreation department. That's what that money was set aside for. And we've been using it for a lot of different other things, other than just recreation. So, um, I, I know that there was, uh, like six hundred and ten thousand dollars set aside, uh, there at the end for, uh, that come out of ABC for recreation this year. And I know that was money was going to go back into it, that would put us back over half a million dollars. So, uh, but, but that money, from day one, um, we, we decided that that would, that money would be used for recreation in any capacity.
Ms. Harris?
I agree with David, because I was on council when we did it, and it was to go to recreation, period.
So whatever, really for capital projects?
Yes.
Because, because a lot of times, capital projects would, recreation took the first hit. So if anything was going to get cut, it was always recreation. And, and, and certainly we wouldn't use these types of funds for operational.
No.
It would only be for capital projects. So not necessarily for special things. I call it special when we have a baseball bat that's less than 10 years old. See, that's special in the Mount Holly Rec League, you know? We used bats that had to be 25 years old when I was coaching. So that's special to me, for the kids to have updated equipment, to have the right catcher's equipment. So I assume these are capital projects within recreation. Okay. Everybody, yes, sir?
I was just going to read out what they were. If y'all wanted to know what the six hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars is, it's a sport court at the Tuck Gym, then you got to replace the storage building at Tuck Park, which is three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Um, a dump trailer for nine thousand, um, a parking lot at the Lake Trail is a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, and then some greenway signage at 10,000. So the main, the main amount on that is that, uh, storage building that, that, the, I think it's 40 by 80 at least, yeah. So they're all capital.
Yep.
Yeah. Is that good? Yes, sir.
Yeah, one more. I, I don't know that this fits entirely at this point, but, um, I'd like to request staff to do a study on the longevity pay and explore what others are doing, how that is, whether that's a common practice still, um, both public and private, and, um, study that particular concept, um, and have it maybe considered in, in next year's budget as a, as a topic of consideration. I think we're probably far too, too far down the road this year to really talk about it, but, um, given what we're coming out of this year, I don't know that it would be entirely appropriate, and we've got a whole nother topic around salary. But with some of the things going on with salary and merit, um, I, I'd like to kind of look at what this practice looks like elsewhere, whether we should be continuing that. Um, and just to, I'll get this on the record, the concept that is in my mind is that it, it gets replaced with a merit and a COLA system that allows employees to earn pay, and then you don't take anything away from anybody. You include what longevity was at the time, if we decide to phase it out, in their base salary. So you're actually better off, because it's part of your base, and it's in part of your retirement, it's part of your raises and that going forward instead of one-time payment. So before everybody starts getting upset about Jeff trying to take something away from me, and, you know, uh, it's actually something that if we do this right, would actually be an increase in a number of benefits. But I'd, I'd like to explore that, um, program and see if we might be able to adjust it to where it actually benefits the employees in a little different way.
Okay.
That's all I have at this point.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. Next, discussion of HR salary study. Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. All right. So this year, um, human resources and finance, we combined forces to do an extensive salary study for all employees of the city. In past years, um, human resources conducted an annual salary study to help ensure salaries are appropriately ranged. Past measures were to attempt to bring salaries to the median of the reported data per position. A handful of positions have been adjusted to meet the above measurement, and over the past few years, um, only about roughly five positions have been adjusted. However, with the adjustment to salary grades, employees continue to be brought in at a lower rate than appropriate. Um, what caught my eye to notice that adjustments were needed was employees were being brought in below the minimum on our current grade to meet, after a six-month probationary period, a five percent increase to meet the minimum. There are current positions within the city where employees are brought well below the minimum, um, two to three dollars below, in fact. Therefore, creating a need to make several salary adjustments to employees hired over the past five years, essentially creating a domino effect of needed adjustments to combat both current and forcing compression.
Hannah, can I ask just a question?
Absolutely.
I don't quite how to ask this, but how can somebody be hired in and offered a job at a salary that is not within the amount that's approved by HR? Wouldn't you approve? Not you, I'm saying the position.
That is correct, and that's the question that I asked. Um, and I tried to get background information as to why that was happening, and I couldn't get a validated answer. So I started digging deeper and realized there were more rooted issues with our salary and pay grades, which resulted in this.
Me, I want to clarify, you just took over this position. So by no means am I casting that at you. I'm just saying, you found this when you got there and you're like, something's not right, you know, and then you, you're trying to address that.
That is correct. I consulted with the departments that it impacted. They weren't unsure. Um, and we tried to find a reason and could not, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir?
Just to add to that, after having been in government for 30 years, um, the practice is there's a minimum for a reason, and the minimum is, is the least that someone should be paid, just to say it out loud. So, um, I'm glad you've found that there's a practice that's not following standard operating procedures that is pretty much there anywhere, you know? And if you did hire somebody at the minimum, oftentimes it was kind of what you described, which is if I made it through a probationary period, then there would be some sort of a bump up because I made it through that period of time. And, um, so I'm a little surprised to learn that as well, because usually a position has to be approved by HR before it can be offered. At least that's the way it works everywhere else I've been.
Me too, but I, but I'm glad you found it and you're on top of it. So thanks.
Of course. The data collected was from the North Carolina League of Municipalities. Um, they conduct an annual salary survey, and we contribute. And once all results are received, uh, because we are a participating municipality, we have access to the results of that study. Data used was filtered to only include same-sized municipalities with relatable job titles. The city did take into consideration surrounding municipalities while keeping main focus on same-sized municipalities. Those surrounding municipalities that did not report to the league, I reached out to and collected data and incorporated it into the city salary study. Both the city salary study and the league do not extend to part-time staff or contracted employees. The need for action comes with compression correction due to the pay grades. Um, they have not been increased since 2016. Competitive salary rates, we have several positions that are kind of all over the place. We have extremes where we're on the lower 25% range. We have some where we're above 25%, but the most of them are below the 50% threshold, and that is one of our, um, goals in achieving the salary study.
Mr. Mayor?
Our solution approach is to bring all positions to the top 50%.
I'm sorry, Ms. Meadows has a question.
Sure.
My back turned to him.
Yeah.
Before we get into the details, could, could you explain salary compression? What does that mean?
Sure. So an example, um, actually, a recent example would be, we have not increased our salary grades in, since 2016. Um, a manager who was hired into a promotional position with the, with the rates of 2016, say, three or four years ago, is making X amount of money. We now have a manager who has received three percent increases over the past four years, or, uh, excuse me, an employee, not a manager, who has received those three percent increases, as has manager A, but he is over the, um, pay grade minimum, because he has received that, but we have not also increased our pay rates. He is now being promoted, same years of service for both managers. So we had to adjust manager A as well, so that there wouldn't be that compression, because he had more years of service in the position he held. Does that make sense?
No.
No?
I didn't track that at all.
So from one, I think what she's saying, from one grade to another, are getting so close that there's little distinction between a, a grade 10 and a grade 11, so that if you got a promotion, it's almost negligible, because you're, you're not, you're already into that, is what I'm seeing, hearing. Does that make sense?
Yes, we are continuing our pay, we're continuing the cost of livings without raising the pay grades. Therefore, a promotion is at minimum a 10% per our personnel policy. That's going to put them already well above the minimum, because they're probably already over the minimum, because we haven't raised the pay.
You mean the midpoint or the minimum?
The minimum for the new, for the new promotional pay grade.
So they're already above the minimum for the new promotional?
Because we haven't been raising the pay grades.
Okay. Yes, sir.
So my understanding of compression goes something along these lines where you have employee A going kind of along your, your situation, who's been with you for some period of time, and the market has outpaced the, the raises that you have in general. And then I go hire somebody at B, and they come in at the same place as the other person, because the range didn't move. So I couldn't continue to grow as a current employee. So you need to move the entire range. I'm trying to think of how to, to describe it more simply, but you've got kind of two different things going on. I have it arranged, that minimum, midpoint, and a maximum. So a position is worth this to the city, and I come in somewhere on that, that grade. And the compression comes in where I haven't moved, somebody's moved, and I hire somebody in for the same job. And if I pay them the same thing, the current employee is not real happy about what's going on, because people know it's all public record, right? So, hey, I've got 10 years of experience, and you're paying me $10 an hour, and you just hired Joe off the street for the same $10 an hour. That's my understanding of salary compression. So if you don't move your rates and you don't continue to provide COLA and merit so people can grow in their salary ranges, you end up hiring people off the street for, at the same, or in some cases, more than what somebody who's already in your organization is making.
Yes. Yes. And to piggy, if I may, piggyback off of what he just, um, mentioned, when you don't, um, increase your salary grades annually, you run also into the cap ceiling, and those employees, that it limits their growth, because we're not increasing the grades to raise the maximum as well, and we do have long-term employees, so that has impacted also.
And is, is that, some of that caused by longevity pay?
One-time.
Because you're giving them, no?
One-time payment.
Just a one-time payment? Okay. I, I didn't know if that added to their salary for going forward. So it's just a one-time payment? Okay. Uh, Lauren, I'm sorry. Shoemaker?
I mean, is part of the problem that the, like, the, the COLAs are not being added to the, the, the base pay?
Correct.
That seems like a pretty simple fix.
It gets more complex. I'm trying to get some, sorry.
Are you, you're going to comment on what she asked?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm trying to get a couple of basic concepts, because this is going to get even more complicated here in a moment when some other questions are asked. So I'm trying to get some baselines, because methodology is going to matter. And you're, you're talking to the, the methodology. There's a couple of different methodologies one can embrace, and we're going to have to decide which it is we want to do. Um, that's why I'm asking some questions, trying to get a baseline. Um, we're going to have something else.
Sure.
Uh, this won't be a popular statement again, but positions are worth what they're worth in the marketplace. So it doesn't matter if I've done the same job for 30 years and I'm really, really good at it, it's still only worth so much in the marketplace. Um, I know that's not a popular opinion, but it's a fact. Just because I've been here for a long period of time, doesn't necessarily mean that I'm getting more for doing X than, than the person who's been here half the time that I have if they're still doing X. Just want that on the record, because that's going to be important at some point as well.
Based on today's current environment, I would say so.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So our solution approach is to bring all positions to the top 50% range of all reporting North Carolina municipalities, um, bringing employees to the minimum salary grade to crack compression resulting from no increase to pay grades, to also increase the pay grades by thirteen point six percent. This was calculated by the past four years where employees were, um, given a three percent cost of living, and I use the CPI of January of 1.6 to equal thirteen point six percent. Now, this past year, we were given a bonus. Um, however, I use the lesser of the two, three percent COLA or 1.6% increase, because nothing had been essentially approved for all employees. So that equals to thirteen point six percent that I propose to increase the pay grades by. And moving forward, the city's pay grades will be adjusted to equal that of any percentage increase given to all employees, be it COLA or CPI. The formula that we...
Mr. Meadows?
I love that when you give me those looks.
Well, we continue on with the HR institution. It's great.
Uh, yeah, um, I, I don't even know how to respond to that, so I'm not. Um, this is before we get into the application. This is where I'm, I'm a little confused at best in that, um, I understand that if you had a set of salary ranges and you had done the adjustments, because you hadn't done a salary study, that you'd be moving your ranges to kind of keep folks where they should be. But you've done a study of the market itself. So you know what today's market rates are, what is the minimum, what is the median, what is the max. So I'm a little confused on, on the methodology that we're applying here, because we, we seem to have done a study and we're not using it. The study should say what the market is. We shouldn't necessarily be artificially setting a market by going, well, this is what we did. And, yeah, because the, the adjustments by whatever CPI or COLA that we use are stopgap measures, because we should have in place every second year, every third year, we're going to go check the marketplace, and we're going to adjust to what the actual market is. That's too much to do in every year. I get that. So if I go from year one, that was based on an actual market study that says, you know, I paint, so painters get paid $12 an hour, we know that, you know, minimum is 10, medium is 12, the most I should pay for a painter is $14, whatever that math happens to be. Well, the next time I go to the market, the market could go up or down, you know, usually up, but it could go down. So now I go check the market and, and I maybe adjusted it So now I go check the market and I maybe adjusted it as I went by, you know, some percentage that we've moved the rest of our employees. But once we've gone and done a market, you don't do both. So I'm kind of a little bit confused in, did we do a study? And we actually know what people are being paid and that gives us a baseline to manage going forward? Or are we just adjusting by four years and we don't know what the market is? Because I think the rest of the data, when you get a little further back here, we know what the actual pay ranges are. So, you know, it seems to me that we do one or the other. Either you do the methodology of, hey, I'm moving it from here to 13.6%, or you adopt this is what the pay ranges are, then we take a look at what everybody is being paid and we decide what is our target. And it seems that you guys have chosen 50% of the range, which I'm not, I have a question on that at some point as well. But if that's what we're shooting for, that's what you would measure your benchmark against. So I'm a little bit confused on methodology. I'm looking at Miles to answer that one, I think.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, we looked at both of them, but talking about going back into the market, we did. We went back to the market, and that's the League of Municipalities. And it says for the painter that here's what the range needs to be today because everybody else is reporting their data. And so we looked at where our painters were, and we said, well, they're over here. Well, we need to get them to here. So if a painter had been here for, say a painter's a five-year painter and he is in that range, we got to move this painter who is a one-year employee up, and that's where the compression issue is coming in. So now we have to look at the employee that affects, that's been here five years. So what do we do with that employee? We got to adjust that employee too. So we did, we kind of looked at it both ways, but then we said, how do we get back up here to where they need to be paid? And then we had to set a range in between, like the minimum and the maximum. That's where we said, well, let's try to dive right here in the middle. And so, but it just affected more people than just looking at everybody. It affected the entire staff of just the new employees, the existing employees, how they fell into it. Then you had to set some parameters as far as like, how do we adjust those folks too? And that's kind of the stuff that's kind of down into the spreadsheets that we have is that we had to look at everybody. And that's where 71 employees were affected by us moving it up to where it needs to be in the market.
So there seems to be kind of phases or pieces to this puzzle, and I'm trying to get the first piece that you measure all the rest of it by and play. So my question is, from a methodology standpoint, have we gone and said, the painter's pay range is X, Y, and Z, and set that? And that is today's market range? Is that what we have done? Because that's not what this says. This says that we've, we had something from 16 and we've adjusted employees and we've added this to the pay range. So what is the pay range being set at? Is it 2016 plus these increases and that's what we're calling the pay range now? Or is it, we looked at what the marketplace of all the other municipalities are paying and said, here's what the universe is paying?
If we found a position that did not fit within the grade that it was placed already, a couple of positions were moved for that exact purpose. Because in comparison to the market research, it did not fall in line with the grade that it was already presently in. And typically, you don't move grades. But they, it did not fall, so we made a couple of adjustments with this couple of, about two or three positions, because those were the only ones that fell outside of the range.
So let me ask a question a little differently. A position we know exists elsewhere, Planning Director, something near and dear to my heart. When we looked at another Planning Director, did we say, you know, here is the range that is established by the marketplace for Planning Directors based on other cities our size? Or did we say the Planning Director was at this in 16, so I'm adding 13.6% to that? Because that's what the presentation says. If that's not it, explain to me what's different, so I understand.
So, can I try? I think, correct me if I'm wrong. So there are two different things at play. There are two ways to adjust the salaries, right? So, you know, whatever the Planning Director, his maximum, like, you know, lowest, middle, and highest in the range, was set at in 16 and not touched, and we established that. So it would make sense, since we just did a salary study, that we would adjust it to the salary study. So if that bumped up the range $5,000 or whatever, it would make sense to use a salary study as the hard fact saying, this is what the market values a position at right now. But this is saying, we took that range and just added 13.6 to it.
Mm-hmm.
So which one is it? Is it, we just took 2016 and added 13.6? Or did we take the rate study and take those numbers as gospel and that's what we established?
It is the first because we...
So it's a 13.6?
Yes. In sense of moving forward with the pay grades to adjust as whatever percentage, be it COLA or CPI, that's the practice that we put in place for increasing the past rates.
So why did we do the salary study then? If we're not going to use that as a basis moving forward? I mean, it seems to me like if that's what the market, if we're saying a position should be paid with the market values at, then why would we take all the, I'm sure it took a ton of time. I'm sure you guys, and like you said, you called everyone. The amount of time that you guys spent doing that, why wouldn't we value that as the highest standard of information that's brought to the table and say, this is what we're going to pay people? Because we're going to put everyone at 50%? Or everyone at 42%? Or whatever?
Right.
So wouldn't that like, wouldn't that be the hard and fact ra, like, the hard and fast range?
Maybe let her answer.
Sorry.
I mean, I'm just saying.
I'm not trying to grill you. I apologize.
I know you're not. It's great information.
Yeah.
And it's great discussion, but I'm anxious to get the answer as to why that wasn't done.
Well, truthfully, every annual salary study that we did, whenever pay increases were made, as they scattered as they were, the pay grades were never touched. So I went based on past practice of increasing the pay grades with whatever percentage was given across the board.
So just to follow up on the question, if it's okay if I ask this, is the salary study information you found to be insufficient for our needs based after you did it? Is that the reason you didn't use the salary study information when you did this?
Yeah, go ahead.
We used the salary study to get all employees to where they should be. Where the 13, we didn't dive in to say, what am I trying to say? We didn't have a clear formula on how to then move our salary grades. Because everybody was off the 40, it wasn't just like $5,000 here and there.
He had his hand up first.
So I think what's going on, and I was trying to do this in a methodical way for purpose, is I think what's happening is that you've conflated two issues. So, you know, from a methodology standpoint, I need to set the salary range regardless of what else is going on, regardless of what past practices, and tonight's probably not a good time to cite past practice based on a number of things that have come to light.
It's been illuminated.
Yeah. Anyway, I'm trying real hard not to go there. But so I think what's happening is that, well, let me back up. I've been on at least two other salary committees in my tenure in public service. And the first thing we did was went and said, what is the market range period? And set that. So then a couple of things happened after that. You know, once you've set the range and it's whatever the market's paying, that's what it pays. You know, you can like it or not, and you may be, you may find that you've got people that are above the maximum and they're not getting, you know, if we choose as a group, which we typically do to give them a one-time payment, that's all they're ever going to see. You may find that people are well below even the minimum and they've got to be brought up to the minimum. Those things come out, but you set the range first. And then here's what I'm playing to. Then you go and make the decision of, okay, what is the target range that I want my employee base to be at? What is that number? Okay, so I set that next. Then I go and look at, you know, I've got my painter and, you know, man, he's only getting $10 an hour and, you know, the mid-grade is $12 an hour. I've got to move him to at least 12. You know, or I find out that, hey, I got a painter that's paying $15, you know, he's getting a dollar more than he ought to, but I can't do anything about that. So as long as he's here, that's what he's going to get paid. So I think that our language is important, and I think the way this goes is we say, we have reset our salary ranges, and here's what they are. A is the minimum, B is the midpoint, C is the maximum, for every position that we have. And you said some of them didn't have them, so you've got to kind of do some guesswork. How does that fit with others based on their job descriptions? And you dig into that. Then you go to the work of, how do I get people to where they need to be? And just for the record, it doesn't have to be based on any past practice or any percentage. It could just be, you know, they used to make $32,000, the minimum of that job is $36,000. Congratulations, you just got a $4,000 raise. You know, your salary starting next week is $36,000. I think that's what I'm hearing going on. They're trying to take some very complicated information and something that quite frankly appears to have been left alone for a long time and not tended to. Did I handle that well? And trying to straighten it out. So I am sorry that you're, I think this is one of your first presentations to us in public that you're having to endure this, but, you know, I'm thrilled.
You're doing very well.
Thank you.
I'm thrilled that we're trying to get it straightened out, but I'm not tracking. The numbers are my thing, so.
Well, what would be helpful at our next meeting is information.
I mean, I just, I guess maybe Miles, like, my thought is, if you go through the work and effort of doing a salary study, wouldn't it make sense to then implement that as the pay ranges? And then that way, we're not getting into a situation where the ranges haven't been touched for five years? If you're going through that effort, and then, and like Jeff said, that sets your baseline. And yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't cover everyone because there's going to be outliers and there's going to be some weird stuff, but at least you have that set so the next time you hire someone in, you aren't looking at five-year-old numbers.
Yeah, I think that'd be good if we did that. I think we, I think we've got all the numbers. We probably could do that and come back to council at the next meeting to show like where they fall, maybe toss out, you know, if we're considering two things at one time. Why to have that data is good, but then to show like the difference in the two, if you bring them up to this, what's it going to be? And then knowing in the future that if we get a CPI increase or a COLA, if we move to merit, at some point, we have to move that scale every year. That's the purpose.
I think what we're talking about is an internal policy again, and I think it looks something like this. We do a salary study and we set the ranges. And each time that we adjust, we adjust those ranges so we're staying with a methodology that gets us close to what's current in the marketplace until we get to the next salary study. And I think you guys need to decide internally, you know, do I want to do that every two years? Do I want to do that every three years? I don't know what would be a good practice. I'm going to leave that to y'all. While I'm down in the weeds, I'm trying not to tell you what to do or how to do it. I'm just trying to provide some direction in that, set the ranges, adjust them as you go. And then once you get that piece in place, you know, it's not so much a percentage increase as it is, the number is what it is because the position is worth what it's worth. I said it earlier on the high end, you know, but if it's worth X and we've got somebody doing X, if they're above that, great, you know? They'll be mad that they didn't get a raise and, you know, people will deal with that. But if they're not where X is worth today, you're standing the potential of losing a really good employee who's been here for some period of time, who just happened to get caught up in some less-than-desirable practices. So I'm not as concerned about how you get people to the minimum. I do have one question on that front, since we're asking about a lot of different things, is if you have a minimum that a job is worth in a particular area and a maximum, why are we trying to bring everybody to the midpoint? Could be good reasons for it. I just don't, I'd like to hear what they are.
Our goal isn't to bring to the midpoint of the pay grade. It's to bring to the top 50% threshold of the study results. So if a position such as a normal position like a city manager, for example, I might have 30-plus reporting municipalities for the state of North Carolina. So we want to be in the top 50%. So in the top, above the 15th.
So I'm going to repeat that.
Yeah.
I think the way I took it was, we were going to bring everybody to the midpoint. What she said was, we want to bring everybody to at least what 50%, the top 50% of other municipalities are setting their ranges at. And how that's different, I'm not quite sure, but I think that's what she just said. Is that right?
Yes. We didn't take the midpoint of our salary grades into consideration. It was the 50% range threshold, I should say, 50% threshold of reporting municipalities for each position.
So I think we're about to conflating, so we're talking about two different methodologies. We're talking about how I set the pay ranges and how I'm moving people to meet them. So we need to make sure that we're sorting those two things out so that when we adjust, that we're in a good place going forward. It might be accurate, but I'm not, I'm not having a warm fuzzy so far in tracking. And like I said, this is normally kind of my thing, and I'm a little lost right now. I don't know how to get unlost.
Well, I think one way maybe, and I'm just throwing it out, so we, because this won't be solved tonight.
Sure.
Is if maybe you would get together with Hannah and Miles and share some expertise and maybe come to an understanding? Would that be okay with council? Is that good? Lauren, would you like to be a part of that?
Yeah, I just, I was sorry for the sidebar. I was just saying, I want to be there because I have some ideas too about how, rather than setting everyone at 50%, how you could use that 100% of your range to show longevity, merit raises, things like that, as someone progresses through their career. That's how the federal government functions, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Love to have that experience. So that's great. Is that okay?
Absolutely.
So we do have some time constraints, and I know that two people up here, as of Sunday, are gone for two weeks. So, and I know you've got, the budget is supposed to be adopted on the 14th when, you know, we don't come back till Saturday, so I don't know how.
Sunday.
It can be the July 20, or June 28th meeting, right?
It's before June 30th.
As long as it's before June 30th.
I'd rather not do that to them. I don't think it'll hold up the rest of it. I mean, we're...
What are you doing this week?
Okay. After 11:15, I'm good most days, but we'll figure that out.
Okay, all right.
So the number for the budget is, if we make some adjustments, this 3-something number in here, 396, 346, whatever it is.
Yep, 369, 825.
That number might be impacted, maybe not. Maybe you explain it to me and I get it and I go, oh, I just didn't understand. That happens. So what's next?
Any additional information you'd like to share on the salary study?
Nothing outside of what's provided in the packet.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Anything? Okay. Thank you. I know you're still up there.
Yeah.
This is kind of what I know, health insurance. So discussion of health insurance. Hannah Reivers.
Okay.
And I'm going to start looking at this board because I can't see everybody that, I need a rearview mirror.
Can you read it though?
No, but I got to be able to see, because every time I turn around, if somebody has something, I have to go back and it's frustrating.
We're going to get to it up here.
I'd rather see it when it happens.
Okay. So our intended change for this fiscal year was to go self-funded. We had a high claim year, bringing all options up to roughly 18% increase. So we had initially intended to go self-funded to reap any benefits of a good claim year moving forward. However, we were unable to do that. Blue Cross Blue Shield was, they were unwilling to release any data to the reinsurer. And by not doing so, their current claims were considered too risky of a liability, placing that option out of range, costing more than a 19% increase. Therefore, we have decided to do, to go level funded. It's more so considered a stepping stone of self-funded. It gives us more flexibility with our plan design, and there are still some cost benefits as well with it. There's a $50,000 credit implemented in the first bill, and that actually reduces the 18.5% increase down to 16% spread throughout the year. And through Cigna, that is the new carrier, the city will receive a refund if claims run well. There will be a $50,000 credit applied if we decide to renew the following year. Level funded looks and feels like fully insured, has some of the same protections. There's a pay, we pay a fixed premium each month regardless of the claims, much like fully insured. The robust claims utilization reporting capabilities, custom plan design, and no deficit carry forward if you have a bad year. forward if you have a bad year. And this is what the end result will look like. Our current weekly deductions, this is for employee versus the new weekly deductions with that 16% increase and what the monthly difference will be for employees carrying dependents.
That, that looks more understandable than the first one we got.
Yeah, I apologize.
It's okay.
Yeah, the first one.
I was confused.
Have the employer cost on it.
Is, is it important that everybody understand what she just covered? I'm just asking. Level funded, self-insured, fully insured, is that important? Wanting to know that or is that clear?
It's clear. Clear.
Good, okay.
That's all?
That's all? Okay. I think just at the end of the day, I think what it helps, it helps the city have more flexibility in the future because once you get the claims data that will now be available to you, that should have been available before, you'll be able to have a bigger market. So right now Cigna was willing to take you on, take on the city of a partially self-funded basis. So meaning in a self-funded world, it's going to be like this. You, you don't know what your claims are month to month. You have a stop loss which keeps it going too high, but this is really stepping your toe in the water, getting the information. So then the market becomes much bigger. Once you get this information, you can provide it. That's what's important about this step. On a fully insured basis, carriers control the information as Blue Cross did here. It could have been Aetna, it could have been anyone, United. A lot of them are really the same in what they provide. So this does allow the city with some safety of a fully insured type plan, but at the end of the day, your claims are your claims. I mean, your, your health insurance claims are your claims. They're either more than 80% of what you're paying in or they're not. And if they are, you're going to get an increase. Alright, plus the cost of inflation and medical inflation, as you all know, is, is high. So, yes, sir.
So I'm scoring all kinds of points for employees tonight, I'm sure, but have we looked at the employee? I know that our standard has been paying all of it, but have we looked at what others are doing and what, you know, other insurers are doing in that going forward? Is there any sharing of employees of those costs? Because this seems to be one that is growing rapidly and difficult to cover.
Are you speaking specifically to employee-only coverage? No, not that I have found. I took a to, a poll of eight municipalities within Gaston County, all of which paid something for employee, either 50% or up. And I sent out a poll for the state and everything I received was 100% coverage for employee-only.
So there's not a standard or it's all over the place?
No, I mean, in municipalities, at least locally, in my experience with the two firms that I worked with for 20 years, municipalities paid just right out about 100% of our employee costs and anywhere from 25 to 50% for dependents. It's, it's pretty universal, unlike private companies that don't approach that. So, but it, it is part of the compensation that we're talking about. And I think it should be noted that employee-only coverage, that's a 16% absorption that the, the city is taking on, that's not passing on that cost. And I don't, I don't think people really realize total compensation, but when they see that number, what's the employee-only cost? What, what is the employee-only rate?
I don't know.
I'm going to gather it's about 450. 400?
Employee only that the city pays was?
I don't, I know it off the top of my head.
It was like close to 600.
Almost $600 a month. Okay, so I was a little bit low. I bet I was right before the 16% increase.
Oh, on the, oh, it was 668.
After the increase?
After the increase.
Right, so about 500, give or take. So you just absorbed $168 every month of employee costs for health insurance. That's significant. Most private employers would pass that on. Just, that's, that's the way the private world works. I know it's part of total compensation, but that, just a, a look, kind of talk about, yes, it's competitive with municipalities, but you know, that's the way it works. Yes, sir.
So, and, and this is another one I'd like to have looked at over time in that, yeah, I raised the employee compensation as a package as a whole, and I've kind of talked about Joe and Sam, who Joe's single, Sam's not. They do the same job. Sam's not being paid the same as what Joe is because he has the family care covered. That, some folks ran with that and said, oh, he's trying to take our family care. No, I just want to make sure that everybody's receiving the same compensation for the same job. So I'd like us to explore what, what I've heard called a cafeteria style where you're given $1,200 or whatever it is and that'll cover, you know, essentially X, Y, and Z and then the employee gets to decide, you know, maybe Joe likes to fish is the example I've given and three more days off so he could do a fishing trip would be great, but Sam wants to continue covering his family and uses the dollars in that way. And, and that way you have a certain amount that you can cover. I might want dental, I might not, you know, I might, might have that covered somewhere else. So what I would hope to do is to bring us to a, a, a benefit program implemented in a way, in an electronic format, that allows folks to pick and choose what serves their situation best and gets us as close as we possibly can to everybody being fairly compensated for the position that they have with the city, especially where there's more than one of those. We have several of those, right? So that's what I've been trying to achieve for that, just for the record, is fair compensation for a position that's the same. So if we could study that some, maybe not this time around, but for next year.
Well, I think we have to implement a system, as you're saying, and I'm, I'm encouraged. You write, I'm glad you brought that up, that we're looking at an automated pay system. Thank you. Then the next thing is an automated, it does time and attendance, but also you could do the benefit elections where it's automated and they speak to each other and it's fed in and you don't have some of these issues that you've had. So thank you for that. Well-needed over many, many years. So I appreciate it. Lot, lot of good new stuff going on.
So, so Miles, are you writing these down because you're going to see them again?
See them, cafeteria style.
We covered, we, we covered the, the payroll and all that earlier today, so I knew that was going on. So I didn't, I didn't obligate us to do something we weren't already doing. But if you get a bucket of money and you make those elections and you give them work site benefits and you give everybody the opportunity to spend it the way they want to and they get comparable benefits that way. So if somebody with employee family coverage is getting a comparable, I mean, theirs is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of, I'm going to say $1,200 with a benefit where somebody employee only is getting 668. So they're going to get about four or 500, and I could be off, but I'm not off much, four or $500, I'm probably low. I bet the full family cost is somewhere around 2,800.
Oh. For the employer or employee?
I'm talking about total family cost, total family premium. What is it?
The city pays?
No, I'm talking about what is the total premium?
120 roughly?
How much?
Well, this, that's for all covered employees.
Okay, so you don't know the answer and it's okay.
I don't, no, not.
But it's going to be about $2,800 and we're paying 668 plus 50% of the remainder. That's how much more that person's getting in benefit than somebody who is, is only, you know, doing single coverage. So that goes to just point. If you get a bucket and we can pick it and it's automated, that works. Automated part's very important for you.
Yeah.
It will make your life much easier.
And, and just another point, like, because we've touched it tonight as well, in that what you guys are, are doing is straightening out spaghetti noodles that are in a, in a bowl, I get that. But once we get it straightened out, you, you'll have fair compensation that matches the market and, and you'll be providing the best benefit package to the employee that we can. And that'll be clear. We'll be able to educate folks and be able to share with them what we're providing and how it compares in the marketplace. And that allows us to recruit and retain employees. So while it may sound like we're picking at certain things, what we're actually trying to achieve is a better system that serves our employees better and is fair.
But what you're not hearing is pushing back and saying, we're, we're not going to do that. What you're hearing is let's find a way to do it. And that's a positive for the council and the employees, right? So I think that's really positive. Anything else? No? Okay. Next, Michelle, stay right there. Discussion of Powell Bill Funds and Mr. DuPont, it's your turn.
So the last time I came before you was September last year and to be honest with you, staff didn't have a lot of knowledge of the, the future. We were, we had not received any of our Powell revenue. We were waiting for our finance officer or director to come in and so we, we needed those things to happen. And since then, we've had some very good dialogue and want to present a better option, we think, from a staff perspective to help do road maintenance and catch up on some things that we haven't been able to get to. So the, this is the presentation that was presented in your packet. As you can see, this is our general historical revenue over the, since 2014 and we have a 0.88% increase over a 10-year period. So we're projected to receive 422,000, a little more, this next fiscal year. Revenue's projected to increase by an average percent increase each year and we're also utilizing the vehicle tag fees, which is permitted through the general statutes. So the two options is maintain the September variable budget strategy or look at the new option of obtaining a loan to leverage the fund balance. So the scenario one, you've, you've already seen this. Basically, the downside is that last bullet. Just in a couple of years, we're going to be in a pretty hefty deficit and be coming back to council and with a hard ask. And we don't, we're trying to avoid that. That's the biggest thing we're trying to avoid, is coming back with that kind of question. So in discussion with Ms. Wood, we've been talking about utilizing the fund balance to obtain a loan that would allow us to do some significant road improvements now. As you're aware, roads, once they're put in, they immediately start degrading. Some degrade at work, you know, faster paces than other based on environment, traffic, locations. So this would allow us to catch up on roads and I'll kind of outline that in a, in a table to give you a little more detail on why it's important to catch up. But this would be paid over the next 10 years, paid back. And it would also allow us to utilize these funds to get some projects implemented that are Powell-eligible and been on the, the docket, so to speak, for the city for a long time. And we're ready to try to get these done sooner than later. So this is the variable budget. It's, you know, in FY '24 clearly shows 1.3 million, we're, we're in the hole. And you see all the projects listed there. They're the same projects that you've probably seen many times over many years with this presentation. So we're trying to clear, clear the plate with these projects. Then you get into the loan. As you can see, the balance, we, this is taking out the 10-year payment. We're in the green, so after FY '30, that payment falls off and we would, we would regain that $731,000 annual payment. And these are estimates based on some, some general information we received that Ms. Wood researched. So that's, they could change a little bit, but we feel that they're, they're pretty close, even if they shift a little, that we can still maintain the, the positive balance and the fund balance. So really here's where I want you to focus on is the comparison. So when you really look, compare the two, what are you getting for this money? So the variable budget, you know, just in year one, this next year, for every maintenance linear foot, we're, it's $111. Well, with the loan, we're doing much more at half that. So we, when you really dig into the numbers, we are doing more for less because we're able to bundle these projects, get better bids and, and get bigger projects put out that'll get bigger contractors to come to the table. So we feel confident that these numbers could be even better if we go through the loan and maintenance option. And so as you can see, when you get to the end, the average over the next, just the first five years, the average cost per linear foot's $25 versus $94. And yeah, we are spending more money, but we're doing more. 89 road segments compared to 25. And when you really look at this, these numbers aren't really accurate when you look at the variable budget because we're not getting to the four that are supposed to be rehabbed in '23, '24. So by the time we get there, those are really reconstruction. So the cost isn't $74, it's probably closer to 111, which means we're not doing four, we're doing maybe one or two. So then those next two get pushed out. So we're never catching up in providing that quality maintenance. So that's, that's the goal of this loan option. Then the remainder would help us implement some other projects, Alexander Street, Catawba Avenue underpass, a pedestrian crosswalk at North Main Street and Highway 273, Belmont Mount Holly Road sidewalk, Beatty Road sidewalk design right away, construction, Tuckseeds Road sidewalk. Also, doing this allows us to bundle some of these and also look for opportunities to bundle these projects with other projects in the city to get a better economy of scale. So we're very excited that with other things going on, that this could actually, we could spread these dollars even further. And it also speeds up the timeline. And I, I know that, I know I receive calls, when is this going to happen, when is that going to happen? And I can only imagine what, the calls you have, that you receive on them. So staff's recommendation is to move forward in this next fiscal year with the loan option. And then these are the basic steps that we would work through if council is willing to do this.
Questions?
I said wow.
I think it sounds great. I, I want to answer some people that are watching right now who might say, if you can't get 273 finished, what makes you think you're going to get this done? That's being done by somebody different? We're in control of this, not the NCDOT, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just wanted to address that upfront before anybody posts that, even though you will anyways. Yes, sir.
Just to make sure I understand a couple of concepts that are in play here. First being that economies of scale, you're going to pay less for a bigger paving project than you are for a small paving project. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, second is by borrowing money at, at 2.5 to 3% today, that cost is less than what the increase in cost of materials and implementation would be each year. I assume you've looked at that?
Yes.
Okay. And then the third piece is, so this is kind of like the, the leaking window. If I buy the $20 caulk and put it in, it only costs $20 to fix it. But if I let it go for two years, now I got to replace the window, all of the, you know, framing around it and likely the, the sheet rock inside, right?
That is.
So what was $20 is now, you know, six or $700?
Correct.
Okay, just so every one of these, we kind of win. The other question I have is, are we using the full amount of the Powell in the leveraging or just a portion of it?
I believe we are just using a portion of it. So as you see in the loan slide, we, we are, in the, the green, the very bottom balance, that's the remaining after we've made our $731,000 payment to the loan. So we, and we've done the few projects and we're doing the maintenance that's on there, pothole repairs. The general stuff that's not, that just comes up, that just happens. So we are not spending it all, so we still have it, but if it, but the intent is to spend it to the loan.
So for once, you, you've given a more complicated.
I'm sorry.
Answer than, than I did question.
I apologize.
Don't.
You've been hanging around me too long.
Don't apologize.
So by my mind is that we're not using all of the Powell buns, Powell funds on leverage? You still have money available to do pay-as-you-go, but by leveraging a portion of that, you're, you're going to be able to get more done quicker?
Yes.
I have, I have only one more que, and does anybody have any more questions? Are we going to work on the sub, the, the crossings that were painted initially? You know, the ones when we first did it, they slid all, everybody slid into the corner?
Gosh.
Well, the cro, like the crosswalk that goes in front of the Historical Society, it's, it's horrible. Like it needs repairing. Is that part of the process here? I know it's not part of this, but I'm just talking about normal maintenance. Can, can we look at that?
Yes, sir.
You don't have an answer?
I do not have that answer, but we can definitely look at it.
That's fine, I'll take you on a walk with me around town. Okay? And we'll look at these things.
Yes, sir.
Because we're going to do stuff in downtown coming up with great events and people are going to be sitting right here on this cracked area. We all knew it was going to happen, but we have to keep it up, you know? That's all.
And, and I, that's a great point. There are going to be things that are not strictly road ma, like asphalt maintenance that we have to take into consideration.
Well, I, I know Shane knows it, Shan, I mean, knows it. You know, he sees it every day. So that'd be good to look at.
Yes, sir.
But thank you for a great job. I think this was awesome.
Mr. Mayor.
Michelle, great job. Mr. Meadows.
So now that we've done a fine job on this, one of the things that, that I think we need to revisit next as well is that at some point, we are going to have to find some at some point, we are going to have to find something other than just Powell Bill to maintain our roads. So my next challenge to staff is now that we've found a grand solution for one revenue source, we need to be exploring how are we gonna do some of the other needs that we have because the state is not providing enough to get it all done. So if you guys could, could explore other alternatives around that, maybe start looking at some of our other debt that's falling off in the future and maybe have some plans, cause I think you guys are really on to something key, which is the caulk story. You know, fixing it today is a whole lot less than once the, the sub grate is destroyed and then you got a whole nother project going on, right?
Yes, sir.
So I really like what staff's doing, Mr. Mayor, it's awesome.
Great, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle, you're, you can sit down now, I know, been there a long time. Next update on the strategic vision plan, Mr. Bill.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. So it's been a while since we've talked about the vision plan. I think we all were a part of the latest iteration, but take you back to oh three, some of you were here, some of you weren't. Ron Morgan, Dr. Lee Beatty, you see many, Bill Gary, Henry Massey. You see how these folks spent weeks going through a vision for Mount Holly. It was, it was something that other towns wish they could have done. It was something to be proud of. So, so basically, buy million dollar bond referendum for the streets, streetscape and linear park were passed. But very simple process, put five goals on paper. So that's the five goals. Still working progress, we're still working on a great main street. Greenways, green connections, the downtown connector trail, which is the linear park trail, restaurant with dogs, event center, being the grand hall, a museum, you know, with the Historical Society being in that place. Those were five goals from oh three. Some of the accomplishments from the original vision plan, you had this, this mill. Two thousand and three, it looked like this when the city bought it, you know, ripped off the facade and, you know. That was a phenomenal project, you know, that's the backside, the police station and the, the greenway. This really was put on paper in two thousand and eight, so it's another picture. So in oh eight, there were sixty one recommendations in oh eight plan, forty nine were accomplished. There's others that kind of are in progress, particularly related to greenways and outdoor recreation, recreational opportunities. Some were just not good ideas. Build a bridge over the railroad tracks at Clearant. Why? We have a road going there, you know, but it went through a public process, so, so you just changed focus. Two thousand and nineteen vision plan update was started in October twenty seventeen. We, we estimate pretty solidly eight hundred and fifty citizens participated in that plan. What was to improve connections, expand downtown and create really good first impressions. Those were kind of the goals of the overall plan. First highlight, we did our first, first market study. It showed what we all know, we need another grocer in town. We could, we could take several grocery stores. We need landowner cooperation for that and that's something that we're working on. But we leak, and these are two thousand and seventeen, eighteen numbers, we leak a ton of money to other towns. So getting those business opportunities in Mount Holly is key. Things people like based on the survey, quality of life, small town feel, safe and clean, easy access to the Charlotte metro. Some things that people rated low or wanted more of was more shopping, dining and nightlife, the need for more job opportunities and public transportation. Every day, Mount Holly sends about six thousand people out to work. But we import five thousand people in from outside of Mount Holly, which is good, we have a really good job center in town. Not just a sleepy bedroom community of Charlotte. So this was a priority in the two thousand and nineteen vision plan. City bought this parking lot in two thousand and twelve from the Eden Group and it was a jumbled mess, we all saw it. Crisscross of utility lines, but you know, turn it into that, creating almost ninety parking spaces in our downtown. That was something we all should be proud of. This was another focus, the Dutchman's Creek Greenway. Caramont Health was a great partner, as was the Frogs and Community Development Foundation. But to connect the linear park and add additional three quarters of mile for our future bridge over Dutchman's Creek. And that's a seven twenty five Elm Street is a good reference point in that picture, we're all familiar with that. That's some of the pace, that's the greenway, some before and after pictures, particularly around the hospital, Caramont site. Just improving what was a sewer line easement. Gotta thank Brian DuPont for looking at our a hundred and eleven goals in the plan and going through it, cause you kind of get lost in that matrix, right? That's, that's a lot of spreadsheet information and we're taking times to, our time to create a narrative as an appendix to the plan where it just tells a story, has a picture. So people don't have to go through the line to find out the information. We wanted to be easier to read. But out of the a hundred and eleven goals, being in a COVID year, I think we're all impressed that we have twenty one goals accomplished. Some of them may be funding art, you know, which was decided at the retreat, you found its way to the budget. Some were, let's, let's clearly define the development review process and create a good annexation policy where this developer knows exactly what to do. And we're not dealing with subdivision review for multiple years because of a confusing process, an unwritten process. So, so that's a kind of, next steps, what are the short term, right? You know, it goes two to, two to three years. This North Main gateway is gonna be key for us. The pictures show what it could be. Obviously DOT, you know, at some point will focus on road improvements, not in the near future. But the city sold that old fire station, it's gonna be developed, we're, we're getting some interest. But that whole area, you have the Mount Holly Cotton Mill, which recently had a new roof put on, I believe. The Woodlong Mill, which we have ratcheted up code enforcement efforts on that. Those are great opportunities for folks. Those are some of the components from the original plan that were highlighted. So this shows the old fire station and the Woodlong Mill and all the wonderful opportunities for Greenway connection in, in linking downtown. We have to grow our downtown, we don't have enough room in Mount Holly now. We turn away people all day long that want to be in town, but they have, they can't find space. This is the Triangle area, the old gas station, which kind of reminds you of a fuel pizza or something like that. It could be retrofitted, but go big, you know? Add that in, create a, a commercial center on North Main Street. Dutchman's Creek Greenway is gonna be important. I told you about the one behind the hospital, but going in the future, this was listed as a priority. We want to like start working on design of that because that, to give you, this, forgive me for my rudimentary drawing, but this is kind of like the highlight, it gives you like that blue star is where the first, old fire station is. So how do we connect that to Elm Street? You know, that would be a Greenway, U Greenway connection. That's a crosswalk project on Highland. That's our current Greenway that was just completed with the ribbon cutting, bridge and then game on, we're all the way up north. So very simple little drawing, but. So you know, expanding downtown was another focus of the plan, study on Veterans Park. We've seen what that's turned into with McAdams help, with the amphitheater and the expansion opportunities, the splash pad. So that's in the plan. Dutchman's Creek, Cataba River, again, seven twenty five Elm. What we've invested in River Street Park since the last plan adoption, that before and after. Continued investment, a million dollar CDBG grant into that area. Duke Energy has a kayak canoe launch there that could be expanded. Dutchman's Creek Greenway again, goes back to the investments in the gateway itself, the two thousand and eight vision plan for the area. And the plan really creating that nice investment along East Charlotte Avenue around the hospital. We've gotten some interest. I think, you know, things progress. It's really, this is what I show folks when they come in looking for commercial opportunities. It's just a simple map showing Center City, Charlotte. NC twenty seven, bam, Highway sixteen, bam, I eighty five, Wilkinson Boulevard. I four eighty five linking everything together. So you have between twelve and thirteen point six miles, multiple ways to get in and out of Charlotte, but that gets you right to Tradentron. You know, and so folks visualize that and they want to be here. This is, you know, five, ten, fifteen minute, you know, drive times that we look, look at how it reaches. Fifteen minutes away, you're reaching a hundred and thirty one thousand people. So Mount Holly's population is around twenty thousand now that we estimate and have gotten pretty good confidence from census. But within fifteen minutes, you know, this is within twenty five minutes, you're all the way to almost King's Mountain. You know, you create destination points, folks are gonna visit them. The bridge over Dutchman's Creek, that was, you know, that's gonna be dependent on the general obligation bond. So that's, I think the city's gearing up for that with partner help. You know, something that is in chapter four of the plan, excuse me, chapter five, is really exploring a marketing potential for this Woods and Waters District up north. You know, we have, City Gastonia owns four hundred and thirty seven acres of land that has no trespassing signs all over. You, you saw in your budget tonight, you approved parking improvements for Parks and Rec because we have no trailhead up there and we have folks parking all up and down the street that calls problems for our police and fire department. But that opens the doors for more collaboration opportunities, working with Gastonia, working for, with the North Carolina Forestry Service to realize the true potential of all this acreage up there. So I think, you know, we, we're in a better position than anywhere and it related it to Knoxville, that outdoor urban wilderness in Knoxville. But fifteen, twenty minutes outside Charlotte, you have twenty five hundred acres with, with the other opportunities off Killian Road. This kind of shows like the heart of Mount Holly, twenty seven crossing the river. That's the heart of the Woods and Waters District, which goes all the way up through that state educational, Stonewater Bay, now imagery. Going on to the gateways, you know, there's a lot of plan recommendations that say, hey, you need to do this to the gateway, you need to design this. Well, DOT at some point, hopefully soon, is going to widen ninety five. It would be foolish to spend money on design and have DOT rip it out after we put it in. So obviously coordinating efforts between DOC and Belmont and start working on some smaller things. I'd say smaller things, some things that we can control. This was, came out of the study that was done as part of the a hundred and forty five thousand dollar connector road study that analyzed, really it's ten parcels on here, four were split up. But it says you need internal connectivity to move people around, to make these lots develop. Council was very progressive in thinking, hey, we need to fund a connector road. So out of the study, that orange line says, hey, that's where it needs to go generally speaking. And you know, we've been in talks and you've been kept informed of that. Hospital, Caramont Hospital, you know, investing in that, in the gateway, it has opened up opportunities already. You see it in a few short weeks, you see what was a hole at YMCA Drive is now level. That will be an intersection improvement, goes along with the plannings and other things. We got a hotel that was drawing other hotel interest in the area, cause they have, they love being around each other. Like a center, you have the, the Hilton in Belmont, the Fairfield Inn, the Holiday Inn Express. We've received interest from some others as well. And that's the new hospital. Arts, you know, that's the lantern parade, you saw the art crawl that was Friday night. You saw the tattoo studio, I don't know if any of y'all, I saw the video, I was out of town. But Melissa unveiled the art gallery that I thought was phenomenal. Taking that old space and turning it into a gallery and putting a boutique tattoo studio through some zoning changes, you know? And you know, that's really kind of the next steps, you know, where we are is kind of giving you some highlights of, you know, some short term goals. But as staff, that's something that we meet monthly on to see how we can accomplish things with like little to no investment from the city. Can we change this text to reflect this goal? Let's check that off. So just wanted to provide you an update and happy to answer any questions.
Does Council have any questions? I think it's great, I think we need to continue to, to highlight it as often as possible, what we're working on. What are short term goals that we can do, whether it's bike racks downtown, what have you? I mean, these are things that can be done in cooperation with other people and, and obviously organizations are involved. The Community Development Foundation, they change leadership occasionally. So you need to reestablish with them what they agreed to do last year, may not be what they remember they're doing this year. So that, that's important because that continuity is important. So I think if you can get us, you know, regular updates on the vision plan, I think that's important because people need to know what we're doing. I don't think they do. And I think they need to be understanding, I mean, if I'm sitting in the audience tonight, it's the first time I've seen this, that's pretty impressive. You know, but we, we've got to continue to push to meet all those goals. So, thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right, thank you. That's good stuff, that's great, I would move my business here. I think it'd be great to open a business that attracts people from twenty miles around, it's a good idea. I need a motion for, I think, all right, before we do it, do you guys feel like conference room or here just based on spacing? I know there's some sensitivity about travel, so. Are you all meeting in there? So, okay. Entertaining a motion going to closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one four three dash three one eight point one one eight three and five. Motion by Ms. Schumaker, second by Mr. Meadows, all those in favor. Mr. Moore, how did you vote and what's your name?
My name is David Moore, I have a vote in the affirmative.
Thank you, we're in closed session.